The eighth session of the special FC will now begin. This meeting this afternoon will last from two to seven forty P M. And there will be three sessions. The aim of the special FC is to scrutinize the estimated expenditure of the government in twenty fifteen sixteen to ensure that the funds they are allocated will not exceed the funds required to implement the relevant policies. Depending on the number of members who wish to speak, I would decide on the time allowed for each member. Please press the request to speak button if you want to speak. I would like to remind members that all questions have to be related to the estimated expenditure. If you want to follow up on the written replies, please quote the number on the right top hand corner. For example, L W B W W zero zero one. If you've not have enough time, you can send in a written question or follow up the matter in the relevant panel. So I would like to welcome the secretary for for labor and welfare and also other his colleagues to come. And then this session is about welfare and women. And then the labor session will be the next session. We've got the speaking notes. I would like to thank members for your concerns. We've received a total of one thousand three hundred and seventy five questions. Actually, twenty percent of all the questions are related to the H L W B. Well, well, that shows your concern on our policy portfolio. I've got the speaking notes here, but I would like to highlight a few sad and points. There has been increased spending on welfare and women nine up nine point five percent. This year, five point two billion dollars, last year this year fifty nine point seven billion, last year fifty four point five billions. And this year, we will be spending six point eight billion dollars, up eleven point two percent on elderly services. And you would be asking the number of places and so on. I will not go into the details. I would like to point out about the E H C C services. We will be providing an extra one thousand and six hundred. And that would bring the total number to nine thousand places. That will be implemented step by step. We would also continue to implement the pilot scheme on community service voucher for the elderly. And one thousand and two hundred vouchers have all been distributed. We're continuing with the pilot scheme. And a consultant is conducting a study to follow up on the scheme. As for residential care services during the remaining term of this government, we will be providing one thousand seven hundred and ten subsidized residential care places. And we've also earmarked sites in eleven development projects for the construction of new R C H Es. We've got also the special scheme on privately owned sites for welfare uses. This is a major breakthrough. And in the next five to ten years, we'll be providing some ten thousand places, including R C H E and rehabilitation places. We would is also looking into a possibility of a voucher scheme on residential care services for the elderly. And last week, we had the opportunity to exchange with you and listen to your views. We will continue with our study. And there is also the elderly services program plan, an emphasis this year. And we would be taking it forwards in accordance with the policy address. And we'll submit our report in mid twenty sixteen to encourage active aging. We've got the public transport fare concession scheme. And last week was extended to G M B operators. Eighty percent of the G M B operators have been covered under the scheme. And the T D has been working together with us. And we hope to have the second batch of G M B routes joining us in the middle of twenty fifteen year. P W days. We would be increasing the spending to five point six billion dollars, up five. Well, we would also be providing more preschool rehabilitation places and so on. That's in paragraph thirteen. And in rehabilitation and also home cares and so on, we will be working hard. And for rehab buses, there will be six buses will be replaced and another six will be upgraded so that the P W Ds can integrate into the community. Social security, we will also continue to make investment. And this year is at forty billion dollars. The spending is around sixty seven percent of the recurrent social welfare expenditure and twelve point three percent of the total recurrent government expenditures. This goes to show that we attach a lot of importance to safeguarding the interest of the disadvantaged groups. One off relief measure, I will not repeat the measures later on in the budget. We said that there will be an extra allowance, equal to two months of the standard rate of C S A say to the C S S A recipients. Retirement protection, Commission on Poverty is working full steam to study the issue. And by the the end of this year, we would be consulting extensively on the subject. And and the there is a subcommittee within the ethical on the subject. And we are having exchanges with that subcommittee. And low income working family allowance lever, that was endorsed early this year. And we are not losing any time to try to work on the scheme. And in the second quarter of next year, i.e. fifteen to eighteen months after the funding has been obtained from electrical to implement the scheme. So we're now doing some preparatory work. And some two hundred and twenty three million dollars have been set aside for the integrated employment assistance program for self reliance to encourage those on C S As to work. And also food assistance service, we've earmarked some spending to extend the service to end of twenty seventeen. Strengthening childcare services, we want to release unleash as much manpower as possible. So we've been doing some work on that aspect. We've increased the spending on childcare services for those under age six. We are providing six thousand two hundred places to for extended hour service. The number of places now is one thousand two hundred only. We would also be increasing the occasional childcare services and residential care services for children. Women, while members are very concerned about women's interest. Actually, last yesterday, we've launched two new initiatives. Before any policies from the government are proposed, they should refer to the gender mainstreaming checklist. And all policies, papers have to be submitted to the H W B to for our scrutiny. And we will do a gatekeeping role. And for the benchmark for appointing women to government advisory bodies, it should be raised by five percent from thirty percent to thirty five percent. So we encourage more women to take part in public affairs. We would also be working on women's employment. So that's that will be one of the focus area of our work in the future. So four minutes each, including answers and questions, Mr. Sin Chung Kai. I would like to follow up on one oh one. And that has to do with elderly services. I asked my Mr. Al Kaho together with your paragraph six of your speaking notes. You said that from twenty fourteen fifteen to twenty seventeen eighteen, there will be one thousand seven hundred and ten additional subsidized residential care places for the elderly in the in the next three years. And in annex two, there is a waiting list, time list. Thirty five months for subvented and contract homes. Number of persons on the waiting list, twenty five thousand two hundred and sixty nine. Homes participating E B P S, seven months, overall twenty months. And nursing homes, thirty two months. Number on the waiting list, six thousand three hundred and eighty four. You said it will increase number of places by one seven one oh up to twenty seventeen and coupled with the aging population. What is your estimate of the waiting time in twenty seventeen eighteen? Would the waiting time be shortened or lengthened? Because you may not catch up with the ratio of the aging population in Hong Kong. So secretary, what's your estimate of the way the the figures in annex one, the waiting time? Will it be adjusted upwards or downwards? We are taking a pragmatic approach and it's difficult for us to make an estimate. While we have to face squarely, face up to the fact that there are inadequate R C H E places. And that's why we've also been doing something to strengthen the the home care services. We have the aging in place as the core and institutional care as a backup. So we would try to strive to add as many places as possible. And for there are also eleven development projects with more places. It's difficult to answer your question as I answered in the welfare services. Well, you you must make some estimate. You can make an estimate up to twenty seventeen. And everyone said that up to twenty forty one and forty two fifteen or sixteen years later or two decades later, one fourth of population will be aged over sixty five. Well, you should be more familiar with the figures than myself. You said your plans are pragmatic. I have to be pragmatic too. I have to look at what is the forecast of the demand? How you should be increasing the supply? If there aren't enough places by twenty seventeen eighteen, can you provide eleven thousand instead of one thousand? Well, as I said, we have the special scheme on privately owned size for welfare users. That's also mentioned in paragraph six. This is a new mindset. We try to think out of the box. We are not procrastinating. A total of forty three welfare organizations have premises which can be redeveloped, expanded, and they've got plots which have never been used, and it is now a waste. So we are proceeding in full steam with sixty three projects. They are now at various stage and we're now scrutinizing them. Are those are those enough? Nine thousand places will be provided for the elderly, seven thousand home care, I mean, R C H E. Two thousand is daycare and also twenty thousand, two thousand residential places. So I mean, that's how we deal with the shortage. Dr. Helena Wong. Women's interest in your speaking notes, paragraph twenty nine. You said that the government will be the proceeding with protecting women's interest. And that will be the gender mainstreaming checklist. And Emily Lau has asked Professor K K Chan at the Letch Call sitting that in the listed companies in Hong Kong only for the board members, only ten percent are women. And there's a far cry from the advanced countries. You said that there is this benchmark for appointing women to government advisory bodies should be raised by to thirty five percent. And in your reply, zero zero two one, you said that thirty seven point nine such advisory bodies have not reached the target. And some of them even come without any women. So forty percent have not reached the target. So you are now going to raise the benchmark further. So what specific measures you have in mind that you can really reach this benchmark? And and I've asked Professor Chan, he doesn't even know what is gender mainstreaming. And he doesn't, I've asked him how the women can be more represented in the boards of listed companies. Well, for for those in the leadership position, they don't know what is gender mainstreaming. So how can you promote this further? Thirty five percent, we are working very hard. Is the latest figure is thirty two point two percent. So we're talking about increase of two to three percent. So for a hundred advisory bodies, we're working hard. And government heads of department should try to identify more women for their boards or advisory bodies.
And of course, things will have to be kept confidential. But then in our central database, if we know the details of these women candidates, then we can provide these lists for them to consider so that they can start to identify those prospective candidates. But then for some ports or advisory committees, there might be some difficulties because it's not for the government to appoint the members to the board because the professional bodies have to make their own nominations. And in those cases, there might be difficulties because in the engineering sector, for example, there would be fewer with women who are in the profession. So we will try to, we will have to make a breakthrough in those cases. So in terms of the culture change, we are very serious about this. Number one, we have to do it ourselves. We have to ensure that the government will be taking the lead so that the business sector will follow suit. And then for other business sector bodies, either there is a culture change or you will have to do it by way of legislation. But then that will be very complicated. Well, bureau director, can you promise that you'll be providing training to the bureau directors so that they would know how to use the gender mainstreaming checklist? In fact, we've been doing that. In fact, last month, well, just before the release of the policy address. Well, every month, we have an internal senior management meeting within the government. And thanks to, well, I was grateful because I was given an hour so that for the senior officials, including bureau director all the way down, there was some two hundred senior officials there. And I spent an hour or so telling them the thirty five percent target and also what's meant by the gender mainstreaming checklist. So within that hour, in fact, the only objective was to ensure that there would be this culture change so that we will have to attach importance to equal opportunities for women and also equal participation by women. And in fact, we have also released issued a notice to all the bureaus and departments concerned. In fact, we have been standing in the frontline and we've been advocating this without sparing any efforts. Mr. Wong Kwok Hing.
Thank you. I have two questions. First, in para nine and ten about the special fair. Well, I am grateful that, well, out of the four hundred and seven G M B routes that's been implemented and some thirty two operators will be joining in the second half of this year. So they will be in the second batch. I'd like to say that at the policy address briefing session, already asked you with regard to the G M B implementation. After that, will you consider doing what the mainland has been doing? All right, in Shenzhen, Guangzhou and other provinces and cities, you can spend another five hundred million dollars so that eligible elders and also disabled persons will be able to enjoy this special concession. And you said that you would consider that. So what's the timetable for your consideration? And when can that be implemented? And upon implementing this to the G M B routes, you will consider this. So that's the first question. And the second one is reply number two three six. It's about male being the subject of spouse abuse. So that has already increased to seventeen to eighteen percent. In fact, it's not just women who are the victims of spouse abuse. Sometimes men are also the weaker sex. In fact, male suicide has been standing on the high side. So I'd like to know if the administration has been concerned about the situation with regard to male being abused? And what about the hotline? Would that, would those phones be taken up by male too? And also, have you set up male shelters? Because in some cases, for the victims of spouse abuse, they would have to stay in fast food shops and also fast food shops running around the clock or even gardens or parks. So have you considered that? First, on the concessionary fare, thank you for your support and thanks to the transport department. In fact, they have exceeded their target. Initially, we did not think that so many G M B routes would be participating. But then in response to your earlier question as to whether or not there'll be an across the board fare concession. In fact, we have not ruled out any possibilities. So we will have to wait till after we have completed the comprehensive review because we don't know in the process whether or not there are problems. We still do not know. For example, for G M B, we have just started the scheme. We don't know whether or not they might encounter any problems. That's why, well, there are still some ninety plus routes that have not yet implemented this. So we will have to wait till after we have completed that for the G M B. And then in a year's time, we will conduct a review. And by then, we will see what the way forward should be. Because this is an important measure because we'd like to encourage the elders to go into the community and enjoy life. So we will be considering that very carefully. And of course, we will also have to bear in mind the resource implications, whether or not public money has been used in a most effective way. But then your view will be incorporated in the review and that would be put into the agenda. As to male being abused, well, I asked the welfare department to supplement. Yes, there is a rising trend for males to be abused. In fact, we attach importance to both male and female. So we won't say that if you are female, then I would be more, I would be more concerned about you. So even so, if there are male victims, we would also be helping them. And we have not said that, well, if it's a male caller, then a male will be answering the call. In fact, for female listening to a male's call, that would be easier because in terms of communication, that might be better. So and all social workers have also been professionally trained. So can I be allowed to finish? Well, in terms of the shelter for abused spouses, in fact, it's so male victims can also go into one of those shelters if there is a need. Maybe the director can supplement. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. With regard to male victims of spouse abuse, well, in terms of domestic violence and also sex violence, we have actually looked at the figures for male and female. We have collected figures for both genders. And then for crisis intervention and so on, for example, for C S A Crisis Center, we have also looked at the locations or places for male and female. So we do attach importance to that. And in terms of collecting data and also in terms of support, we have been making special arrangements for them too. Next, Pun Shiu Ping.
Thank you, Chairman. I have two questions. First, reply number one seventy two. It's about the portable, it's about the residential care in Guangdong. And some some thirty two million dollars have been set aside for about four hundred places. And at present, there are only thirty three elders who have joined the scheme. So I'd like to know the reason why there have been so few. So would you advance the review date? Or are there ways to step up the publicity so that more people can be encouraged to join the scheme? Next, answer two four four. It's about the S W D's computer protection system. For last year, the operator or the contractor had to have the contract terminated because it was, he was not able to complete the project. And now you've you have spent some, you have established some forty seven civil service posts for that. And you have also set aside some seventy eight million dollars for the purpose. And you plan to complete the project by twenty eighteen. I don't know if you're confident in meeting the schedule. So concerning the S W D's services, have that been affected? And also for the existing system, will that have an impact on the existing services? Well, I'll be answering the first question on the Guangdong scheme. And then I'll defer to the director to answer the second part on social security system. Well, for the first part, for the response on the pilot scheme, in fact, the number has been rising. And for Yen Tian, some twenty six have gone into data and eleven have gone into the other places. And then for, there are some thirty seven cases outstanding. So the reason why the response has been relatively slow, that's because some elders would prefer to stay close to their relatives that would facilitate the care offered by their family members. And also, if they do not have any connections or clansmen in the vicinity, then they would find it difficult. But then I think the situation has been changing because we have been looking at those on the waiting list for government subvented institutions. And there are some twenty thousand. So right now, they can actually apply on their own without having to wait for their turn. So I believe that in the near future, the response will become better. But then it doesn't mean that we're actually forcing many elders to join the scheme. In fact, we'd like to monitor the operation of the scheme and then we'll learn from the experience. So we are not actually asking the elders to go into those institutions. It all depends on their desire. So I'll ask the director to answer the second question. On the C S S S, well, we expect that the new system will be commissioned in early twenty eighteen. And we are actually doing the development right now, but then we have not stopped at that. In fact, in order to ensure that the new system can be commissioned smoothly, before it's commissioned, we are actually upgrading the existing system. In fact, we are already at the final stage of that. And at the next stage, I will be completing the upgrading of the existing system. So far, despite the fact that the new system has yet to be completed in terms of the services that we provide and also for our frontline staff and also for those beneficiaries under the C S S S, they have not been affected at all. In other words, of course, it would be the best if you can finish it before twenty eighteen. But then if you're not able to meet the schedule, then there would be problems, right? Well, we have prepared for the different scenarios. Yes, we are planned for it to be commissioned in twenty eighteen. But then for the upgrading of the existing system, in fact, the upgraded version after, according to our discussion with the contractor, given the long lead time, they are quite confident that they'll be able to meet our needs. I'd like to ask a question on zero one eight two. And my question was the S W D in twenty fourteen and fifteen, some two hundred and sixty thousand people who are on the well, there was a post review and many of them have exceeded the income limit. That's why the O A L A payment has been stopped. So for the two hundred and sixty thousand, that's the total number of recipients. So what do you mean by sending them a questionnaire? And if they have exceeded the limits, then they would no longer be eligible for that. And according to what you said, some eleven thousand six hundred elders have been affected. So I'd like to know to what extent have they exceeded the income limit? Is it a minor accident? So in terms of the asset limit, if we adjust that upwards, then does that mean that these elders can apply or reapply for the allowance? Well, I'll see a few words and then I'll ask the director to supplement. In fact, you're right. That is, there are different reasons. In some cases, their asset limiter, their asset has exceeded the limit. So in the future, when we review the system and if there is any upward adjustment, then of course, the number of recipients will increase. But then even though there are eleven thousand plus people who have fallen out of that, but then there are also new applications who have been successful. So we have some forty, four hundred and fifteen thousand people who are now getting the O A L A. I'll defer to the director. Well, on the auto conversion program, all right, we have sent out the form to them and then they'll fill it out and then we'll review the situation. And if they have any areas that they are not sure about, then we will take it up with the applicant. So there is no question of us just looking at the reply and then reject their application. For cases which have exceeded the asset limit, well, relatively speaking, well, there are many of them have not exceeded the limit to a very large extent. That's why in our review of the fact that we have already collected the figure, we will be reviewing that very carefully. I have another question. It's zero one eight nine, zero one eight nine. And looking at the annex, there are several categories where the average waiting time has gone up, including the long term or the long service L S S C H and also the C N A for the seriously mentally handicapped. Well, the waiting time has gone up. The original waiting time was already very long and now it has gone up further. So bureau director, what can you do to help?
Well, we are also very concerned about the institutions. In particular, the serious disaster song has seen the lengthening, has seen a lengthening in the waiting time. That's why in the coming few years, other than the private land for social welfare facilities, which will provide some two thousand plus places, we have two schemes in Shu Ram. The Shu Ram Hospital will be redeveloped, redeveloped into the largest integrated rehabilitation complex. So that will be in Shu Ram. So we have already passed the planning stage. So we are doing the detailed construction planning. We hope that in a few years' time, so out of the one thousand plus places, we'll be looking at the few disaster songs and then places will be provided. And also for the Kailing Shelter, And also for the Kaiping Shelter, that will also be converted or turned into the Kaiping Complex. Because if there are more people on the waiting list,
then we must provide the places. So if you look at footnote two, the waiting time for some is nine years, others fifteen years. So the average has gone up because of these cases. We have to face up to the issue. We don't try to explain ourselves away. We try to take forward the increasing in the number of places in a pragmatic manner. Ms. Emily Lau.
I would like to ask a question about women's affairs. I am bewildered. I don't know why women's affairs come under LWB. In two thousand, in the United, in SEDAR, that was the suggestion that the government should establish a centralized body to take care of funding and policy formulation and so on. I don't know how it is now come under the portfolio of the LWB. I asked Professor Chan, he doesn't understand what is gender mainstreaming checklist. Well, Germany has legislated on this. Can Hong Kong follow suit? He said, no. Women make up only eleven percent of the board of directors on listed companies. In Hong, in the government is thirty-five percent. So you said you would like to work together with the Women's Commission. They are, they mainly focus on empowering the disadvantaged women. But then gender mainstreaming goes beyond that area in the business sector and in other sectors. Women should be on an equal footing as men. Well, Secretary, you said that you spent one hour teaching the senior officials on what gender mainstreaming is. Well, even if you spend, say, eight to ten hours, it won't do any good. Well, they don't, they still don't understand, Secretary.
Well, even if you try to spend one hundred years on it, well, it will not be of any use. Please, try to advise, say, people like Professor KK Chan on how to include gender mainstreaming in the formulation of their policies. So we would encourage women to participate in various arenas, including government affairs and business sectors and so on. I spent one hour to talk about gender mainstreaming. This is an important beginning. Our work will go beyond that one hour. The Permanent Secretary has issued a notice on gender mainstreaming with examples cited to and it has been issued to all government departments, all the senior government offices. I agree that we must still continue to work hard in the business sector. I know that you have written to the Women's Commission. Do you agree to legislation? I agree that we should do more work. Legislation is rather contentious. Well, if we go by legislation, we will lose the flexibility. I think it has to do with the change in the culture. We can work, say, together with women bodies like Women's Foundation, which has a very great influence in the business sector. They don't work only on the grassroots. They work on the business leaders as well. So we can collaborate with them more. We can work through luncheons and so on. And I think the business organizations should also take the lead in the gender mainstreaming. So do, does the secretary agree that for any paper presented to the legislature, there will be a paragraph on gender mainstreaming, what they have done? Well, see, in fact, starting from first of April, for any major policies, we must do an assessment from the gender perspective. And they should take reference from the gender mainstreaming checklist. So that start, that started from the first of April, right? So it covers all papers, right? Well, for some papers, they may not have anything to do with gender, so there would not be such a paragraph. But for other areas like welfare, education, hospital, medical, then that paragraph will be included.
Dr. Fernando Zhang. I would like to ask you. My first question, one oh four. And that has to do with the waiting time for rehabilitation services. Last year, that was a record high again. I am concerned about preschool children, SCCCs. Six, eighteen point five months instead of sixteen point nine months. And EETC, nineteen months instead of twelve point five months. The under the Lotteries Fund, you are trying to provide some places in integrated kindergarten and childcare centers. But for SCCC, they deal with the more serious cases. And well, the three thousand dollars grant from CCF won't help. We're talking about a five-day service a week. And what the CCF doing is not of much great help. And there is a great gap between what CCF is offering and the real need. So what are you going to do to help those seriously handicapped who need a place in SCCC so that they can get the service as soon as possible? I'll ask the director to supplement later. I'll speak first. In the next two to three years, we would be increasing a large number of preschool places. There will be eight thousand places to be provided under the special scheme on privately owned sites for welfare uses. While these are seriously handicapped people, they have to wait for so long. And they will be getting into the SCC at the age of three. That means that they have to wait, say, for half of that, those six years. And many of them won't get a place in the end. We will try to regularize the service at CCF. That, well, it can't replace the service, we admit. But to a certain extent, it can ease the problem. Perhaps the director can supplement a bit on the number of places as SCCCs. Director?
We are concerned about the situation at SCCC. The problem is quite serious. There are several aspects. In twenty fifteen, sixteen, we will be increasing the recurrent expenditure. The total of ninety places will be added. And for CCF initiative, we have regularized, regularized it. We will cover children with less severe handicaps. And for those in physical, more handicapped who are waiting for SCCC, we will probably be providing a higher grant. And the enhanced service can be provided to them. So while they are on the waiting list, then these enhanced services can be provided to them. And the secretary talked about this special scheme on privately owned sites. Under that scheme, we will be adding in some one thousand SCCC places. I hope that the problem can be dealt with in the long term. You are just talking about long-term measures, four to five years to materialize. Can we increase the number of places immediately? You provide three thousand dollars a month. Well, a session costs around one thousand dollars. And that's so very different from the service in an SCCC, which is provided five days a week. Can you increase the subsidy and also increase, say, the number of places, day places? Or you can provide service onsite? Yes, we can consider those. Thank you, Dr. Zhang. Mr. Albert Ho.
My question relates to thirty-seven, this is rent allowance. RP, part B. In twenty twenty ten and then twenty fourteen to fifteen comparisons. The rent allowance lower than, or rather, the rent is lower than the rent allowance forty to fifty percent. The actual rent paid is lower than the MRA. So which, which means? Fifty percent. Which means the other fifty percent, they have their MRA higher than the actual rent paid. So for these fifty percent cases, the MRA won't cover the actual rent paid. So a lot of these people are on CSA, so they have to pay rent from their CSA payment. So we've been very concerned about this. So can you narrow down the difference? Have you got any calculations on the difference? And how many people need to pay their rent out of their CSA payment? Can you narrow down the gap? Director?
I don't have the information on the difference, but I would like to talk about the rent allowance. Every year, we, an adjustment is made based on the established mechanism. This year, we are talking about a adjustment of six point seven percent. From twenty twelve to now, we have an accumulated increase of twenty-nine percent. So we, we know that the difference may be greater for those who live in private flats. But for PRH tenants, the difference is not that great. So we are very concerned too. So under CCF, in the past several years, we have a special arrangement for a one-off grant for those who are on CSA and who don't have enough the rent allowance to pay for their rent, then they are given special assistance.
Dr. Fernando Zhang reminded me that there is a, the answer to sixty-three specific figures are given out. Well, then that shows more clearly how many people who whose rent allowance can't allow them to pay the rent. The number is quite, quite large, especially for one person, one-person family. Who talked about CCF? Normally, what is the, the time taken to, to apply? And what is the level of subsidy? How did you calculate the subsidy? For every case, you have to take into account the actual rent. How many families are helped through the CCF scheme? Mr. Fang, do you have an answer?
Three times paid out by CCF. The last time is end of last year. A one-person family, two thousand; two-person family, four thousand dollars. They don't have to make an application. We're just to give the, the allowance to the elderly. Mr. Tan, help you. Question two, three, six is also about a LIF, paragraph twenty-three, and that was endorsed in January the sixteenth. And that will be implemented in later on. Well, a number of the grassroots are very concerned about this liver program. So when will they get a form from the government to department to fill out? When you talk about the second quarter, do you mean that they just start handing in the applications or get, they actually get the money in the second quarter? Now, it's been two months since we approved for the funding of the scheme. I hope that you can expedite the program so that those who need, our need can benefit. Second question. You said that you will be giving a special assistance allowance to students who are on full grant in the textbook scheme. Well, only primary and secondary school students will benefit from that proposal. But those families with kindergartens, children, children in kindergarten will not benefit. So will you just do something about it? In a family, normally the wife doesn't work and they're in need. The third question also relates to the reply two, three, six. You said you need time to take forward the scheme because you have to exchange that information with the SWD. The secretary for, the chief secretary sat at the Commissioner of Poverty that for livelihood issues, there will be a one-stop approach. And families don't have to fill out multiple forms for different schemes.
So are you moving forward in that regard? So is that really the sore time? And also, would that also include the, the low-income families allowance? Well, we've been working full steam on that. And we hope that by the second quarter next year, we'll be able to roll that out. As to which month that will be, April, May or June, we will only be able to tell later. Because in terms of the office, we have just been able to complete the tenancy agreement. And so with the details, we still have to work out. So we'll be grasping, grasping the time. Once we assure we can roll out the scheme, we'll make the announcement. Because we won't be announcing very late because we have to notify the applicants. They will have to keep the pay receipt. For example, if it's to be implemented on May the first, so we will have to take into account the income for the past six months because that would be used to calculate the allowance that they will get. So by the end of this year, we will have to inform them. So they will have to have some information with them. Or else if they have not recorded the working hours and so on, they would not be able to submit the application. So we'll be doing the publicity in due course. So at least there'll be a six-month gap. So that, and then we will also be reporting to the Welfare Services Panel in the first instance. So rest assured, we'll do that as soon as possible. And whether or not that would also be offered to the kindergarten students under the CCF? Well, our view is this. Well, the CCF has also discussed this with the Poverty Commission. We believe that, so this is just the textbook allowance. And it would apply to primary and secondary school all along. Kindergartens are not eligible. So in July, August this year, we'll be able to release that so that before the start of the school term, students will be able to get the allowance. But then for kindergartens, it's a brand-new scheme. So we will have to be very careful about the start of the scheme. Because for primary and secondary schools, students' information have been with us for a long time. So for the LIF, by that time, it will be ready. So there will be duplication of the different schemes. And that has been discussed at the Poverty Commission. And certainly for the one-stop service. So that for applicants, they would only have to submit one single form. But then we will have to talk to the stakeholders further. But then, as you said, the target is that in the future, so long as you have filled one form, that would be enough. But then that cannot be done overnight. But then the efficiency unit is looking into this to see if we can provide a one-stop service. And a consultancy study is underway. And in due course, we'll be giving you an account as to the progress. Yes, Peter Zhang. Thank you, Chairman. First, it's about zero seven four. It's about the online youth outreach program. We understand that that's been in place for some four years now. And according to the government's reply by the mid, by mid of this year, they would be completing the study. And I think that they should have submitted the report to the WSD or to the SWD. Because we would like to know that young people these days communicate to one another through the, through the cyberspace. And another question is zero seven seven. This is about the pilot project on multi-skills worker training. I understand that they have started that for some time now. So what is the entrance pay or what is the entry pay for the young people? Because you're actually talking about first hire then train pilot project. But then in the pro, in the process, they would be receiving relatively low wages. If I remember it correctly, it's about eight thousand dollars. But then if you can only get eight thousand dollars after graduation, then these people will definitely resign. So have you got any threshold for them to know that upon graduation, how much they would be getting as their wages? First, on the pilot cyber youth outreach project is a trend. Because young people are now very used to serving the net. That's why we will have to wait till after the Hong Kong U report is ready before we can tell.
That's why we will have to wait till after the Hong Kong U report is ready before we can tell what the way forward is. But then I do not see that we are not going to continue with this. So it's just about how we're going to do it. Because, well, if you try to do patrol online, well, this kind of outreach project has been very effective. We have managed to reach out to some nine thousand young people, and some social workers can actually establish a connection with them. So they can actually provide counseling to these people. Well, in the virtual world, sometimes it's very difficult. So I believe that this pilot project is definitely, is definitely worth running. But then it's about how it should be run in the future. So we have to get the consultancy study to give us some new thinking. And then for the pilot project on multi-skill, on multi-skills worker training, well, the response has been very good. So about a hundred and forty young people have joined. So we, I've been to the institutions to visit them. All right, they are now able to make some nine thousand dollars a month. Well, for the latest batch, they managed to get some nine thousand dollars following the statutory minimum wage. And they have to work forty-four hours a week. And on two or three evenings, they'll go to the Open U to, um, to enroll into programs, and that will be funded by us. So usually, the program would be for two years at the Open U. So they will have to enroll in the community nursing program. And upon graduation, they can also become carers. They'll be able to earn some ten thousand plus dollars. So they'll be able to get about ten thousand dollars a month. And then upon completing the diploma program in the second year, if they work hard. We encourage them to become enrolled nurse, and then they can further studies and upgrade themselves. So it's not just about offering a job to them. In fact, it would offer a progression pathway for them to move upward. So that's the objective. Yes, Peter Jung. I'd like to wait till the next round. Um, Madam Chan Yun-han.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, in the budget. So um, we are very used to organizing residence forum. And there are people who have difficulty getting support. Now, the premise of this is. Well, during this term of government, in terms of the, um, the life, in terms of the O A L A, it's been very popular. But then when you ask them about their comments, they have a lot of views. So for example, in the past, only those aged sixty-five would be subject to this means test. But now, even those earning, or even those who are above seventy would also have to be subject to the means test. So for elders. Well, um, the welfare that they can get would be swimming. So they would enjoy concessionary fare if they use, if they try swimming. But then. Uh, now that you're offering this O A L A, it's good because you're providing, providing support to them. But then why is it that the administration is not prepared to think about those who are sixty? And now, looking at retirement protection, just now, when you gave the opening statement, I listened very intensively. You said that you have this, you have this subcommittee in this working, in this council. But then we've been having a hard time because we are actually following the work done by the retirement protection working group under the Poverty Commission. And if you have to refer to Nelson Charles' report, all right, he has offered different options. For example, we understand that in the financial secretary and the administration have been saying that, all right. Well, one would go for universal retirement protection, and another option is to go for a scheme where there would also be means test. But still, you're going in rounds, you're going in circles. So we are actually going in circles. We say that, all right, whether you go for Dr. or Professor Nelson Charles' recommendation is fine. But then please don't wait till the end of the year before you come back with another proposal. But then please give us an idea as to what you're going to do in this. Well, on O A L A, well, let me reiterate this. We have been providing this effective pillar that is between O A A and also C S S A. Actually, we are benefiting some fifteen thousand elders. And for those aged below fifty, sixty-five, do we offer any help to them? In fact, in terms of social welfare services, instead of any cash subsidy. Well, if you go to the daycare centers and so on, you will always get help. So in terms of social services, well, in fact, for elders over sixty, we have already adopted a very relaxed approach. But then I'm talking about actual help. You're talking about cash support or cash payment. That would be difficult because you're talking about, talking about public money. So when it comes to cash payment, we will have to be more stringent. And in future reviews, I will see if there is any room for maneuvering. So when? I think there has been a very serious call, there has been great calls for this. But then with an aging population, if we do, if we continue to lower the threshold, then the payment or the expenditure would be very substantial. In fact, that has already given rise to many problems. And if we continue to lower the threshold, then that would become more problematic. In fact, in overseas countries, they are trying to move the threshold upward. But then when it comes to elderly benefit or welfare, we have been doing very miserly about this. So it's not that we are not going to look into it at all, but then wherever possible, wherever there is room for maneuvering, we'll be prepared to do it. But then we will have to look at it comprehensively. As I said, for people over sixty-five, with an aging population, the number of people aged sixty-five or above will grow. And we will continue to look at other benefits. We have actually been working towards the timetable. Chan Yun-han, your time is up. Next, Long Chi-chung.
Thank you, Chairman. I would also like to ask two questions. One would be about the estimates. In terms of social security, your recurrent expenditure last year was thirty-seven billion dollars. And now it has gone up to forty billion dollars and increased by some eight point one percent. So my question is. Would the eight point one percent increase? Other than the so-called inflationary adjustment? Or adjustment by inflation? So for the three billion dollars more being spent, would that have, does that have to do with an aging population? Which has resulted in this increase? Because three billion dollars is not a small sum. So is it that in your estimates? You have already taken into account changes in our society? Do you have any reserve money? What if the three billion dollars is not sufficient? Then would you be asking for supplementary funding from this council later? Next. Well, reply number zero, one, seven. It's about, it's about the pilot project for youth. Peter Jung has also asked about this. It's about the navigation scheme for young persons in care services. So I can see that, well, the government has been working very hard to increase the number. But then the manpower has been far from sufficient. Yes, the navigation scheme would train up some one thousand young people every year. So when it comes to employment for these young people, some eighty percent of them will get employment upon completing the scheme. So for how many years do you have to train them up before? You can really increase the provision of services? Because in the coming few years, you're actually talking about increasing the number of places by about ten thousand. So, um, um, what is the manpower that you would need in order to meet that? Well, for the adjustment to the payment, starting from first of January, under the social security cash payment. That has already increased substantially by some four point seven percent. That has been factored in in the budget. So that accounts for the increase. And also for the rent assistance, that would also go up by some six point seven percent. And also with an aging population, in fact, the pace of the aging is very rapid. That's why we have seen this substantial increase. Second is about the navigation scheme for young persons, well, for the one thousand quota. In fact, the pilot scheme has been rather successful. That's why the financial secretary has promised that he will be providing some one hundred, one hundred and forty-seven million dollars for that. And we would like to mobilize the young persons so that they would join the profession. But then one thousand would not be enough. That's why we have adopted a multiproduct approach. For example, to unleash the, the labor force of the, of the women.
So that these women can also join this care services sector. And also, apart from the young people, and with regard to physiotherapists, occupational therapists, nurses, we will also have some planning. Apart from these one thousand young people, you mentioned about women. Is there another type of similar training at the Y R B and also V T C? Well, in fact, the Y R B is training up a large number of home care helpers who can take care of the elders. And we are also liaising with the V T C, and we hope to get more women to join this sector. Mrs. Miss Alice Mack, I have two questions. Uh, reply number twenty-one. The secretary said that there is this objective of having more women to join the government advisory bodies. Increase from thirty percent to thirty-five percent. In the government's central database, there is only an increase of several percentage points every year. Well, in this central personality index, how confident are you in achieving this thirty-five percent target? What work will you do to do that? You said, Secretary, that you will encourage women to provide their C V to the central personality index, C P I. So what specific measures will you implement? Also, for many prefectures and provinces in the mainland, there are women's associations. And Hong Kong, women do join these women's bodies on the mainland. So you can consider inviting these women to join these bodies. Another question has to do with one, six, seven, community nannies. The secretary said many times before that this is a sort of incentive award. It's not considered a salary. So the award amount is relatively low. This is considered a kind of voluntary work, so it's, the payment has not reached the statutory minimum wage level. Well, this kind of reward is a recognition of the community nanny's work. Well, there is a difference of the payment among different districts. There can be, the difference can be as high as four dollars. Well, can you come up with an indicator? On the payment? To show your recognition to their efforts and their work? Will you consider that?
First, in identifying more women to join government bodies, I think we should work harder. I agree with that. First, we have to instill a change in the culture of the government departments. We should encourage government departments to invite more women to join. And apart from the central personality index, we should also expand our network. We are doing work now. We should engage the women's wisdom, and we should try to invite them to join our system, the government system. And members, if you have any names in mind, please provide them to us. Community nannies. We've explained many times before, this is a kind of incentive payment. Why can't we pay S M W? Now, if we do that, some grassroots families will not be able to employ or engage the services of these community nannies. So through this system, we can help them, the grassroots. So we have to strike a balance among different factors. Actually, a number of women are taking care of their own children at home. And it's just a matter of taking care of an extra child. So can we drop indicators? We can consider that with my colleagues. And we would like to allow as much flexibility to the district organizations as possible. Anyway, we will consider your suggestion.
Mister Albert Chan. Chairman. Some members asked about women's status in Hong Kong. Well. Um, we do have a number of women leaders in the government. Well, half of the permanent secretaries are women, fifty percent. And for some departments, even a higher ratio. Well, in the government, there are a great number of women. But then in the community, especially in the business sector, while the situation is vastly different. If Hong Kong's women senior officials can pay, can get more concerned about women's rights, especially for women in the community. Then we will not be seeing so much suffering on the part of the women in our community. So it depends on whether they have such awareness. A lot of the government officials are really enjoying having all sorts of luxury treatment while they are in post. It's like the case of Donald Jung. When they have been promoted to senior ranks, they turn a blind eye to the plight of the grassroots. Uh, Mister Secretary, you sound that you are very sympathetic. But since you assumed your post, I've been saying this to you. Then there have been a great number of elderly people who are, who have passed away while they are waiting for an R C H E place. Well, the numbers are in thousands. And then you, you're still earning a great salary, you're speculating on properties, and you are earning a very high salary. I think you are one of the top three officials with a high salary. Now, waiting time is more than thirty months before the, an elderly, elderly person can get into an R C H E. Thirty-two to thirty-seven months, depending on the kind of institutions that you're trying to get in. You said that you lack space. But then for the civil aid department, civil aviation department, I mean, they have thousands of square meters for dancing and so on. And there are also vacant school premises around, and also a fellow agricultural land. If you can make use of that, those plots to build R C H Es, then the elders don't have to wait for that long. I'll give you a chance to reply. Secretary, you pretend to be sympathetic, but then you continue to speculate on properties. Oh, well, for whichever official you criticize, they will get promoted in the end. So women's, so I'll defer to the P S to take that question. Well, we have ample time today. P S. We are very concerned about women's rights. The secretary said that the government would like to take a lead. In. Taking care of the interests of women's in our internal policies. We would be introducing gender mainstreaming checklist. We would want to take the lead in having thirty-five percent of the members of government bodies being women. We want to achieve that in several years' time. Uh, we are also liaising with the business sectors and communicating with the grassroots women. We hope that they can participate more in social affairs. Well, we are very concerned about women affairs. Secretary, R C H Es, can I continue? It's been, it's passed four and a half minutes. I've, I've been particularly lenient on him. Inadequate R C H E places, everyone is concerned about that. We are facing up to the issue. We've not tried to find excuses to evade the problem. First, we have this. Special scheme on privately-owned sites providing nine thousand places. This is a major breakthrough for us. There are sixty-three projects to be rolled out in the next five to ten years. And also Y H C C S places, one thousand six hundred and sixty-six places originally. We would be adding twenty to thirty more percent places. And also the allowance for the carers and other voucher schemes for the elderly. So all these show that the current term of government is not evading the problem. We know that we are duty-bound to solve the problem.
We know that we are duty bound to solve the problem. Well, he he gave, he is rehashing the old lines all the time. Mr. Frederick Film. Sorry, the speaker's not coming through. Sorry, the speaker's not coming through. Uh, Mr. Frederick Film. So please be lenient to me on timing as well. I would like to ask a question on eighty-eight and eighty-nine. We uh that's the number of houses posed on um CSSA, CSSA. The three largest races, Kuicheng Estate, two Shaqitmei Polem, two thousand. Um Kuicheng Estate, four-nine-one-nine, um the other estate, five, four-five-oh-two, five-four-five-oh-one. Those, the largest number of people uh on CSSA. The number of households with the CSSA is Kuicheng, three thousand three hundred and eighty. Kuicheng, two thousand four hundred and seventy, Shanshui Pole, um twenty-three thousand six hundred. So there are so many households in a estate getting CSSA. Would that be special measures to help them? So they are considered poor families. And secretary, you are the vice chairman of the Poverty Commission. Do you have any specific measures to help a specific district and not territory-wide measures? In three districts, uh the number of households on CSSA are in uh are over ten thousand. So do you have any special service for these people, the elderly, the handicapped and so on? Thank you, Mr. Film. We know that there are certain districts, um more people on CSSA. Kun Tong is an old district, uh Wang Tai Shin, a lot of elderly. Uh Eastern District relatively rich, but then still a lot of elderly. Kuicheng, a lot of new immigrants, ethnic minorities. So please uh answer my question directly. Please don't repeat uh the information I gave already. So um there are specific works to be done at each and every district. We will be enhancing family services um to help um new immigrants, to help unemployed to get a job. Um, we do take a targeted approach to help, say, the um PWs to get a job and so on. I mean, this is the overall direction. So that's that's me, this means more services will be provided in these districts, yes. Shamshepo, everyone is concerned about that. More resources are devoted to that district. Um, a partnership fund for the disadvantaged and so on. It is a um, well, our all along our our direction is to spend more on those districts. The second question is oh-oh-nine-four. That has to do with for for the um actual rent paid by people who are on rent allowance uh for the past three years. And the number of such people has increased. And the single digit has increased to double digit. That means that the rent allowance won't uh allow them to pay their rent in full. So can the government make an adjustment ASAP uh with regard to their rent allowance? Ninety percent of them are lower than the MRA, but then they are using the rent allowance to um rent a space uh smaller. So that's why they are counted as uh so meeting or below the MRA. In the past several years, we have uh increased the RA uh by a large percentage. The latest one, adjustment is six point seven percent. We've been making an increase uh for the past several years, but before that, there was a freeze on the increase. And for CCF, we have a one-off uh rent grant um to those in need, which can help ease the pressure. Director.
Well, as I explained earlier, well, um in terms of emergency relief, uh DCF has been offering one-off relief measures in the past few years. We have also increased the amount, well, during the last year or so, for one P family, two thousand dollars and two P or above, four thousand dollars. And as the deputy director just said, in terms of releasing that, we try to do that as expeditiously as possible because on our list, we have already got some household names. Therefore, they do not have to uh apply again before they can get the subsidies. Next, Ma Fan Kuo. I'd like to follow up on reply number uh zero-one-six-six. It's about childcare services, the extended service hours. So I'd like to know the number of places. And the administration said that you would be increasing the number of places by one thousand, by one thousand. You've also given up, you have also given up um a breakdown on the places in individual districts. And in some cases, there would be an increase by thirty percent, forty percent. So the administration would be doing that in stages. So how many years are you talking about and how many for each year? And also in some locations, the utilization rate is uneven. So would you be redistributing the places to areas where the utilization rate is very high? That's the second question. And the third question. Well, in answer C, the administration says that um well, you do not capture the number of children waiting for EHS. If that is the case, then I have, how can you come, well, on what basis have you come to the conclusion that you need five thousand more places? So I hope the administration can answer the question. Yes, Bureau Director. Well, I'll say a few words on the policy and then I'll ask the director to supplement. We have one thousand two hundred and thirty places. And now by increasing that by five thousand, we are actually increasing that by four folds. So we'd like to provide more substantive support to the women. So that, for example, if um the extended service is up until after eight PM, then they can be rest assured um in taking up employment. So how did you get the figures? Well, first of all, during the first year, we're starting from first of April. So we will first roll out one thousand two hundred. And then in the next few years, looking at the actual operation experience and also the um uh the capacity of individual centers, we also need additional manpower. We hope to uh increase that to five thousand. That will not take too long because in uh two or three years' time, we hope to be able to, we hope to be able to do it. But then that would depend on the response. So we have actually put in more than a hundred million dollars on that. So director will supplement on the details. Yes, director. Yes, on the breakdown for individual districts, yes, we have seen that in some districts, the demand and the utilization has reached a hundred. For example, Wang Tai Shin, Samshui Pole. So during the first um stage, as the bureau director ju-just said, we will increase um the number by uh slightly more than one thousand. And we are talking to the NGOs. And then we will look at the demand in individual districts and also the NGOs in a particular district, how many places. Well, for example, in a coming year, how many more places they can offer? So we'll monitor the situation closely and then we'll target, target the need for individual districts. But just now, the member also asked that in some districts, the places have not been used up. So can they be distributed, redistributed to other districts? We will also be monitoring that. So for uh districts where the demand is lower, then we can redistribute the places to other districts. So we will be keeping, keeping it um abreast. So did, why have you not got the number of children waiting for the service in individual district? Or else, why have you come to the conclusion that you need to increase that by one thousand two hundred in a coming year and also to five thousand in a few years? So definitely, you should have got hold of the figures before you made the decision, right? Well, on the demand for EHS, we do not have a central waiting list. That's why we don't exactly know how many people are waiting throughout the territory. But then for individual district, we do have some um operating um organization which might have got hold of some figures. So we'll have to discuss with the individual organizations to see what the situation is in their respective district. And then we will increase the number of places for individual district. So it shows that for individual district, they have already given you the figures, right? Or else, how can you know which district would need more? Why five thousand places? Because it would also have financial implications. So you will have to have an assessment. So how did you come to that assessment? Or do you just listen to the NGO's comments? So in any case, you will have to have some figures, right? Director, for the um demand and utilization rate for individual districts as shown in the paper, they have reported the figures to us. But then for the nameless got hold of by individual NGOs and also to what extent there is a demand. Well, we haven't got any systematic um study on that. But then in our uh coming, in our upcoming negotiation with them, we will try to collect those figures. Next, Lang Kwong, chairman. Well, bureau direct, the bureau director in his opening statement has already said in the first paragraph that recurrent spending on welfare has already increased by nine point five percent to fifty-four point five billion dollars. So so many members have asked you about um things that have to be improved. All right, you have increased the spending by nine point five percent. So how much can that do, can that do? You have so many things that you have to do. The more you speak about the needs, the more it shows that by increasing that by five, nine point five percent, it's not enough. Yes, you are doing um a lot more things. So if you're getting so little, how can you be able to do the job? All right, um John Zhang has asked you to do more. So why is it that your bureau has been claiming that you have to do everything and you have to do a good job? And still, all you're asking the administration to give you in terms of funding is so little because your bureau is the disaster zone. So is it that you have failed to ask for enough money? Or is it that they have only been prepared to give you that little? And then they have asked you to come to this council to say good things about your work? Bureau Director, what Mr. Leng is concerned about this, and I understand that. Well, this year, we are spending some fifty-nine point seven billion dollars. We are actually increasing that by about ten percent. The actual increase is nine point five percent. But then let's not forget that welfare spending has accounted for some eighteen point four percent of the total spending by the administration. And medical and healthcare is sixteen point eight and then education, twenty-two percent. And if you look at the increase, because in the past, welfare used to spend only about seventeen percent, side by side with healthcare spending. Now, we have actually outrun um healthcare spending. So in the past two years or so, well, in as far as the FS and the central government are concerned, they have given us a lot of um money. So in particular, you have to look at the close to ten percent growth. So with limited resources, we have to try our best to make sure that it's spent in the right way. So according to what you said, in fact, there has been some increase already. But then the thing is, well, to do what you have told us, well, if you just see an, if you just have an increase by some ten percent, you simply will not be able to um do that much. We all know that. Well, let me point it out to you. What you're trying to do now, all right, allowing elders to age in place, all right, one thousand six hundred places. So it's a drop in the bucket. And then for the um, for these subsidy for uh carers, all right, it's neither here nor there. And for the other scheme, we are actually encouraging people not to line up for government-funded services. So you're just doing it in name. Let me remind you this. All right, it's been said out that you should not just look after your wrong children and your wrong elders. And then for those who are disadvantaged, they all have their needs. So that's what your department or bureau is supposed to do on top of that. On universal retirement protection. All right, um Siwa Leng is going to step down shortly. And then Professor Nelson Chow has come up with this report. So are you going to adopt it or not? So if you continue to shy away from this, then you're actually making life for the entire government very difficult. So I've openly said that I'm not going to give up on that. Because you're actually insulting Professor Nelson Chow. It's already enough. You've asked him to do for you. All right, when I first started the filibustering, you asked him to conduct a study. And now you're saying that the figures from in his report are not clear enough. So what are you treating him like? Are you treating him as a condom so that you throw away it after use? So my question for you is, during your term, have you really made plans for making the announcement that you're going to roll out a universal retirement protection? Well, the government is attaching a lot of importance to retirement protection. And the FS has already set aside some fifty billion dollars to prepare for any plan that will be needed. It shows the commitment on the part of the government and our political determination that we would really want to do this. So it's a continuous commitment that Hong Kong can embark on that path. So please do not have any doubt about it. All right, the MPF has also got some fifty billion dollars. And it's only after my criticism that you have now taken it, taken it out again. All right, actually, well, Mr. Leng, you will have to line up for the second round. All right, thank you, chairman. All right, it's okay for you to filibuster. You can filibuster at the council meeting, but don't do that at the special FC meeting. All right, we have six more members, three minutes each. Xin Chong Kai, he's not here. Helena Wong, chairman. Well, I'd like to ask childcare services about the places for childcare services. In government's reply, you said that um in districts where the demand is high, you increase the number of such places. So that's for the EHS. But then I've asked that repeatedly, that is for childcare services. What is the waiting list like in individual district? But then you have not given a reply to that. If you do not have the number of um people waiting in individual district, then how can you know um where the increase should go to? Director. Well, there are two aspects to this. On independent childcare centers, what we can see, the utilization rate for individual centers. And then as we said, for the EHS, the extended hour service, in fact, we have checked the individual districts' utilization rates. In individual districts where the utilization rate is high, then the demand is also high. And then in some cases, the um utilization rate is also relatively low. But then, um other than the EHS and also the um independent childcare centers, there are also occasional care services and also the KG come CCCs, that is the kindergarten come childcare centers. In terms of the number of places and also the utilization rates, we have got those figures. And based on that, we can see that in individual district for, for a particular service, if the demand is higher, then we'll increase the number of places for that. All right, if the number or if the utilization rate is already over ninety or a hundred percent, then I, um, how can you tell how many places they would need to add? Well, there are two aspects for independent childcare centers. We have to look at the individual districts as to where we can build such a centers and then provide more places. In some districts, we can see that the demand is higher. We have already reserved locations for that and also for the EHS, as we have explained. Well, uh in individual, in individual districts, we have our social welfare officer. And they would try to find out the demand for that district. They have also talked to the district councils and local representatives and district organizations. So they have maintained a very close liaison with that. All right, on an aging population and on elderly services. Well, for those um people suffering from dementia, actually, the number is growing every year. And in this year's budget, have you set aside sufficient resources to take care of these demented elders and also their carers? Can you provide us with the details? And if you're not able to do that, then can you provide us a reply in writing? Uh, bureau director or director, director, do you have the figures? On um demented elders, last year, we have already set aside an additional two, twenty-two million dollars for some forty-one institutions in individual districts so that they can increase the manpower to cope with the demand. And also for the um demented elders, we have also offered an additional grant. And we have also increased the funding for individual institutions, in particular, the board place institutions. And also, we have also increased the number of places for the daycare centers for elders so that more manpower can be provided to provide better care for these elders. And also in terms of the various support services, well, in terms of training, we have also stepped up the number of places for training. And also for daycare centers for the elders. Well, in terms of the space and also the facilities, we have also upgraded those. For example, we have also uh in, um increased the number of uh multiple sensory uh training rooms for them. So we have provided more resources for that. Ms. Emily Lau, I'd like to ask about domestic violence. Well, reply number thirty-six, we have got some figures. And it says here, for domestic violence, all right, criminal cases, one thousand six hundred plus cases miscellaneous, some six hundred. And it says here for domestic violence, all right, criminal cases, one thousand six hundred plus cases miscellaneous, some six hundred. So altogether over twenty two hundred. And then for domestic incidents, what there was some ten thousand, one hun, there were some eleven thousand cases. So it depends on the nature of the cases. And reply one forty, you said that you would look at different ways. And you've also got this learning program for people, so for the veterans, so only a hundred and seventy people have joined or taken part. So my question for the Bureau Director is, all right, you have over ten thousand such cases and now you're only offering counseling services to them.
I don't object to that, but only one hundred plus people participated in the program. Is this the most effective approach? And in the subcommittee chaired by Dr. Fernando Zhang, if people got beaten up, they would like to find an alternative accommodation. Different government departments have different standards. The housing department said that that would be compassionate rehousing if needed. And sometimes you are adopting different standards. Now you're talking about um education here. Educational program on stopping domestic violence EPSDV. We are using different approaches. Some can be helped through counseling, some others not. So we try to come up with the best methods to help them. Only one hundred and seventy cases. Well, the number is on the low side, but it doesn't mean that it's not useful. Well, if needed, we would be referring um cases to the program. And some other need counseling. So what is the most effective approach to help victims of domestic violence? While tackling the problem at source, we have to foster a good familial relationship. We need family education, um relationship between the spouses. Um, that has to be worked on. So there are actually a, quite a number of complicated factors behind domestic violence. We have to adopt a interdisciplinary approach. Secretary, if someone is beaten up seriously, will that, will you not provide a shelter for the victim?
Yes, you are right, Ms. Lau. If needed, we would definitely provide shelters for them. We do now have two hundred and sixty places in five shelters. Whoa, ten thousand cases, Secretary. Well, not everyone needs a shelter. If you look at the numbers, um in, there, there have been a decline in the number of cases in certain areas. Mr. Xin Chong Kai, um, you have answered half of my question just now. Um, you talked about the special scheme on privately owned sites for welfare uses. Secretary, if this scheme is successful, what do you expect to be the impact on the waiting time? The cut in the waiting time from thirty or so months to how many months? You would allow them to build elderly homes. Uh, would you incur extra expenditure on your part? What are your plans? I'll make some brief remarks and then the PS will supplement because she is leading a dedicated working group. And it is a platform with the participation of HKCSSS as well. Well, I, I believe that the scheme will ease the pressure. It's difficult for me to tell you specifically the cut in the waiting time. Actually, in the Audit Commission's report, it is mentioned whether we can have a performance pledge. Well, we have difficulties in doing that. Because for RSHs, um, the elders would like to make their own choices of a specific RSH that they would like to go into. They would like to, say, live together with their spouse. And they may have special needs in diets, religious beliefs and so on. Uh, we have to respect the wishes of the elderly. So it's difficult for us to come up with a specific waiting time, an estimated waiting time. Sometimes it is really beyond our control. But in any case, the scheme will ease the waiting time problem. PS, um, we are very happy to get the support from NGOs. NGOs on the scheme, please speak to the mic. Uh, as one member pointed out, well, we've got the support from NGOs who own, which own land. And they've also got land donated to them by other people. There are some sixty projects in the pipeline. And we hope to help them to complete the technical assessment as soon as possible and can commence construction as soon as possible. Um, we were, we are talking about an addition of ten thousand places. And we hope that that can ease the, the waiting time problem. And we thank the FC for injecting ten billion dollars into the Lotteries Fund for taking out the scheme. And we think that the expenditure for this project will be two, twenty billion dollars. So we hope that the funding should be sufficient. As for the recurrent expenditure, we would be applying for recurrent expenditure, um, depending on how many projects are coming in online every street, uh, every year. Dr. Fernando Zhang, three minutes. I would like to follow up on rehabilitation services. Um, two hundred places in shelters for victims of domestic violence. HKCSSS gave us some figures last year. The occupation rate is one hundred and ten percent. So the service is adequately in shortage. Uh, we need to make improvements. Perhaps we will further tick up the issue at the Welfare Services Panel.
I would like to follow up on the question, reply one oh four. The waiting time has reached a record high. It's difficult to accept that. Ten years for moderately handicapped. And then eight to nine years for severely handicapped. Well, there is only a waiting time for three years for PRH. But how come that for these homes for the handicapped people, three years after three years and after three years? You talked about the scheme on special scheme on privately owned sites for welfare uses. And, um, well, it will be another, say, five to ten, eight years before such schemes can get materialized. Shouted workshops and day activity centers. I mean, there are a number of people waiting for these services. Now, while they are on the waiting list, what kind of services are they receiving? Where are these services provided? Have you considered the fact that these PWDs, um, they are being taken care of by their family members and they're in a difficult situation? Can you have a mechanism to follow up on these, on the waiting list so that they can be provided of further services while on the waiting list? We note the seriousness of the problem. First, on the accommodation, the residential care homes. Six, among the eight thousand, six thousand is daycare places, two thousand in residential care services. In eighteen nineteen, I mentioned in Siulang, there will be the largest integrated rehabilitation building commissioned, one thousand one hundred and fifty places. And they will be providing severely physically handicapped and moderately physically handicapped and severely mentally handicapped people. And in Kun tang, there is another building and that would also provide residential care and daycare services. In the next three to four years, we will be taking forward all these projects. But for the severely physically handicapped people, we've asked for some two hundred million dollars for recurrent expenditure to support these people. The activity center, we are increasing the resources for them. As especially for when the PWDs are aging, then we are providing them with further support. So we're adopting a multi-pronged approach. I agree that we should do more to cut down on the waiting time. I am talking about a system, a mechanism for you to follow up, Mr. Albert Ho.
I want to talk about domestic violence again. Um, reply thirty six. After the recategorization of the police, then we used to have a great number of domestic violence crime, crime, crime cases. But then in twenty fourteen, we're getting one thousand six hundred and sixty nine domestic violence crime cases. And then six hundred and twenty three domestic violence miscellaneous cases. And some ten thousand domestic incidents. Well, which I believe don't involve criminal elements of the government, I mean, the police are not following up with them. And some seven thousand of the cases are referred to the PCBSUs of SWD. I think, I believe that these refers come out of the domestic incidents, right? So what is the nature of these cases? How come that they are being referred to the FCPSUs of SWD? Now, you've also given some numbers on the social workers. A hundred and sixty eight social workers in twenty fourteen fifteen in the FCPSUs. And the average number of cases handled by them is twenty nine. Well, if you divide up the, the figures that I mentioned, then the case number should be, the number of cases should be much higher. Is it the case that you are not opening files for some of the cases? And then you considered that cases closed before handling them? Can you explain the figures? I defer to the director to explain the figures. For cases referred to us by the police. Well, that's the first time reported cases. And for the police, they are um calculating the numbers based on the, the unit of the family. For us, it's not the case. So we will be following up seriously on every case. If a case involves a child under eighteen or a spouse's, then the FCPSU will deal with them. But for other cases, um, another team of the SWD will be handling it. They will be handling the cases using an interdisciplinary approach. We will follow up on the cases referred to us by the police and will categorize the cases and follow them up accordingly. For the hundred and sixty eight cases, they are for, they are under the FCPSU only. You said that you have zero tolerance for domestic violence, but it seems that you're not doing that now. For minor incidents, you now call them domestic incidents. Uh, I, I think it's, it's ridiculous that you are making this change in your approach. It's a categorization of the police. I, I believe that the police are attaching a lot of importance to, um, to the matter. And the sergeants are responsible. And there is a discipline, interdisciplinary approach. Mr. Paul, Chair. Two, one, three, two, one, four. And the IEAPS program. In the past two years, we've been using uh, quite an amount on the project. And the, the administration said the results are very good. And thirty two percent have participated in the program. And one thousand eight hundred and seventy have got out of CSA net. And hundred and ninety two rejected the program. And they are rejected CSA payment and so on. And in the next two years, let me check the figures here. There will be an addition of two hundred and twenty million dollars on the program. You will be giving money to the NGOs to, um, and so that they can use it flexibly. And they would be implementing the program on the, the units of, on a family based approach. So what are the definitions of all these terms? Uh, hundred and ninety two people have declined to join the program. So they will not be given CSA. So what, what do you mean by that approach? Should they be joining the program shortly and then they can rejoin it again? And then you're still giving them the CSA?
So what will the two hundred and twenty million dollars be used for? So will it be given to the NGOs or will it be offered to the recipients as a subsidy? Thank you. In terms of the follow C direction. So we are talking about able-bodied CSA recipients. They should become self-reliant as soon as possible. They should try to rejoin the labor market instead of relying on CSA all the time. That's why the mode of approach, the mode of assistance is different. Well, in the past, we would adopt a household approach. So, well, in the past, there used to be two bodies following up on individual cases. Now we have adopted a comprehensive approach. So what is needed by your family? For example, if the woman in the family needs childcare services so that she can undergo vocational training. So we will try to cater for their needs. So we have found that that has been very effective. That's why we are going to spend more money for another two years because we noticed that the effectiveness has been quite high. Because about one third of the families consent managed to find jobs. And about six percent has been lifted out of the CSA net. So we noticed that this is the right direction to take. And it has achieved some effect, so we will continue with this. As to under what circumstances have they rejected or declined the assistance? For example, if they have to go through some training and if they have to take up some part-time jobs, all right? If they refuse, then we will stop the payment. So the, so the SWD will no longer offer CSA to those who have rejected or declined the program so that they would be encouraged to rejoin the labor market and become self-reliant. So what, where would the money go, to the NGOs or what? Well, most of that would be spent on the training programs of the NGOs because the NGOs would be following up on those cases. For example, they have social workers and instructors and also programs which would cater for their needs. So most of the money would go to the NGOs, not the individuals. All right, if the individual just try to uh, spend time by taking up the programs without really seriously looking for jobs. So what would you do? So if they just joined the program for a week and then stopped afterwards, then what is going to happen? Well, the director is the expert, so I'll ask, so we have an expert here. Well, well, by declining the help, all right, they have refused to join from the very beginning. Or if they just enroll into the program without sitting through it, then there would also be penalties. So the CSA payment can also be suspended for a while, depending on their performance to see if they have improved. And then we'll decide if the payment would continue. But then apparently there are some loopholes, so I'll wait for my next chance. Peter Zhang, second round, three minutes. Thank you, Chairman. Um, I'd like to ask about a reply eighty five and eighty six. So, well, it's been, the program has been in place for um, five, six years. All right, the HA is doing this. So it's about the integrated community centers for mental illness, the ICCMW. So it should be reviewed. But then the administration has not told us as to the way forward. And this year, we have got some twelve point seven million dollars more. So why the increase and where would it be spent on? All right, you're, you're talking about a whole team of workers. So how much would be needed by a full team? Well, I'll ask the director to tell us how the money is spent. But then, Mr. Zhang, well, this center has been very successful because at the opening ceremony, because whenever there is a center opening, I would always be invited. And I was deeply impressed because they are offering comprehensive help. It's not just the ex mentally ill, but then his family members as well as his related members in the community would also be approached. So we, in the past, we used to have different policies coming from different departments and so on. Now we have adopted a more comprehensive approach. We believe that it's more effective. So I'll ask the director to tell you as to how the money is being spent. In term, in fact, we have also hired more social workers, I can supplement. Well, for the ICCMW. So it's an integrated approach and that has started in twenty ten. And we have worked with the HA because the HA has also got this case management scheme. And in every district, we work closely with the HA under their case management program so that in terms of counseling service and also outreach service. And even when patients have to go back to the hospital for follow-up
And even when patients have to go back to the hospital for follow-up consultation. We have been introducing this case management program for that. And in terms of how the money is spent for the additional, well, one hundred and sixty million dollars. In fact, that's used on different services. For example, on day training and for the long-term care home for mental health. And just the ICCMW's have also seen an increase in the number of social workers. So that they would be able to provide more assistance to the ex-mentally ill as well as their families and carers. So that more endeavor counseling and support can be provided. So how much would that cost every month for a full team? Well, I don't have the information with me. Deputy Director, do you have the information? Well, for the ICCMW's, we have twenty-one point three teams altogether. So for the one hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, so that will be divided amongst the twenty-one point three teams. A hundred, twelve point seven million dollars, twelve point seven million dollars. Also, I'd like to say that, in fact, for the ICCMW's, well, that started in October two thousand and ten. So it's almost five years now. And the HA has also got this case management program. And during the last financial year, that is two thousand and fourteen to fifteen, it has already rolled out comprehensively to all the eighteen districts. That's why this year, under the SWD, we will be working with the NGOs running these ICCMW's and also the stakeholders. So we'll be reviewing the work of the centers to see which areas should be further enhanced. Next, Leng Kuo Hong, three minutes, second round. Chairman Chen Yun Hang at the question and answer session. Well, she scolded C Y Leng and said that if he continued his way like that, then he would not be re-elected. Well, when there is universal suffrage, then assuming that the bureau director would be from party A. Okay, so you are a member from a particular party and then you have become a bureau director. And you're responsible for a particular policy. All right, if C Y Leng did not honor his pledge. And if your political reputation would come down as a result of his failure, then you would of course be dissociating with him. Because you would also run, you would like to run for office next time. But then that's not the case, all right? If C Y Leng is not having his second term, then you would also not be holding any office in the next term. All right, C Y Leng, he said that he would consider running for office next time again. But then on standard working hours, all right, he said that he would legislate. And he is now not honoring his promise. And Chen Yun Hang has already criticized him. And also on universal retirement protection, he is not doing anything at all. And also for the savings for retirement, all right, John Zhang has already set aside some two hundred and thirty billion dollars as the future fund. And he said that he would rather save the money rather than protect the person, the people. All right, with the nine point five percent increase in spending on welfare. So that you're actually running welfare for everybody from eight years old to eighty years old. Well, you're actually talking about a nine point five percent growth in spending. And yet you are actually increasing the services by some seventy percent. So, in all fairness, with your hand in your heart. So have you told C Y Leng or Carrie Lam that, well, this is not enough? And things will become very bad indeed. So, well, if people are criticizing you, you should feel shame, right? So, all right, if Leng Kuo Hong runs for CE next time, then it's going to be a big deal. Don't think that I would not be nominated by the twelve-hundred-strong nominating committee. Don't think, don't think that way. So what kind of person are you? So what have you done? All right, it's like Tommy Zhang, all right, I'm asking him to open up two more Chinese Hong Kong-style cafes. And if I'm only giving you a very small amount of money, then you would not be prepared to do it, right? All right, I've actually offered Li Chai Yan to run or to start two Hong Kong-style cafes, then he has refused. So what kind of employee are you if you are prepared to do whatever he tells you? Well, there is no need for him to reply. All right, Chen Yun Hang, three minutes, second round.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question about domestic violence. And then in, after listening or looking at the government's reply, I find it strange. All right, all right, you're talking about some seven thousand such cases in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. But then they have, and if you look at the number of cases referred to the police, there was only a hundred. So in two thousand and fourteen to fifteen, and for those cases. Out of those cases, only twenty or so went into these shelters. So is it that when the police receive reports of domestic violence, have they immediately referred the cases to social workers? Or else how can they offer any psychological or other assistance to these families? I'm referring to zero-zero-three-six. So I think it's a far cry from the actual need. Because out of some seven thousand complaints, only so few manage to be referred. So these are the figures that you have provided to us. So what has happened? So is it that the police have been adopting an ECEC approach about this? Well, I'll say a few words and then I'll defer to the director. Well, as I said, for the eleven thousand five hundred and ten cases, those were domestic incidents involving some quarrels. So they would look into that and they would decide which cases would have to be followed up on by the SWD. That's why some seven thousand-plus cases were referred to us. And if they, if these cases involve children under eighteen, then of course they would have to be referred. But then if it's a quarrel between couples or lovers, they would also have to be referred to the serious cases under the SWD. In other words, the family, the children protection units or registry and so on. So for the other cases, our integrated family service centers would follow up on those cases. So depending on the needs of the case, we will also provide a dedicated support to them. So there would be comprehensive follow-up by us. So it's not that we would just look at the cases and brush it aside. So if you look at the approach, in fact, there are also procedural guidelines for the police and us. So it's not just for an ordinary police officer dealing with a case. So a sergeant would be leading a team to deal with it. And then a file will be opened and then we will communicate with one another. But what I'd like to tell you is that, well, I've also put a similar question to the administration on another occasion. All right, for domestic violence crime, domestic violence miscellaneous and domestic incidents. I'm concerned that for the seven thousand-plus cases going to the SWD. Does that mean that some of these cases have been filtered out? All right, in some cases, there was some, there was a fighter within the family and then the case was reported to the police. And then the police would just ignore it. So do you have a mechanism to review such cases? Because I'm really concerned, out of the seven thousand-plus being referred by the police. So only about a hundred or so have been dealt with. And for the immediate welfare support services being provided, only twenty-four cases. So for the cases that are referred to the SWD, only a very small number was followed up upon. So if there is one single case of a serious consequence, then it would be one too many. But then you're talking about the number of referral calls from the police. Well, in some of the less urgent cases, we would then be following up later. And then for the twenty-four-hour hotline, all right, you're making the referrals by the hotline. Chen Yun Hang, sorry, I'll ask one more question because you have already overrun on the time. You will have to line up again. Next, Wang Kuo Hong, three minutes.
Chairman. I want to talk about the extra two months' payment on CSA and also the rent allowance. The FS set the OALA, OALA, and normal DA and high DA. There will be an extra two months of payment. And for PRH tenants, they will get a one-month's rent waiver. The secretary has accepted the poll establishment camp members' recommendations and rolled out these relief measures. My question is, in normal circumstances, when will these extra payments be given out? And for this paying an extra month of rent by the government, when would that happen? While we have filibustering at the ledge call, we don't know how the timing will turn out in the end. But in normal circumstances, which month will the payment be made? Because when I go to the districts. I consult the views of the residents on this initiative. And a lot of them ask them when the payments will be made. Secretary, please answer me. I believe that the disadvantaged groups are listening to your answer. The government is very concerned about the grassroots people. One point one eight million people with benefits. According to the normal schedule, when there is no filibustering, the, the end of April, the the appropriation bill will be passed. And then we will go to the FC for scrutiny. And going by past experience, after the FC has endorsed it and we need one month to do something to the computer system. And then normally that can be done in July. And going by experience, last year, the appropriation bill was passed on June the fourth. And we were only able to give out the payments at the end of August last year. So what will happen this year? Well, I don't know, because there is filibustering. For OALA, originally it should be paid out this year. And ultimately, that will only be, the payment will be only be affected in the summer of next year. While we've experienced a long filibustering on OALA. And we held seven FC meetings before we could get it endorsed. Well, I hope that the political parties can have due regard to the interest of the disadvantaged groups. Dr. Helena Wong, third round, two minutes. Chairman, two-three-two. I have to, the cash allowance for the carers. The answer is that the secretary thinks there is no need for such an allowance. A lot of the carers of the family would like to discharge their duties in the family and take care of the elderly, of the ill, the children, or the PWDs. And they don't work. If they want to stay in the family to take care of the family members, well, a lot of them are women. And they can't actually get a full-time job. But it's not the case that the, the women can afford not to work. So how come that secretary, you think there is no need to help these carers? Especially for these carers, they need an income. Now, if they join the workforce, who is going to take care of the family members? Well, these family members may have to go back to the SWD for help. And that would, they would rely on your services for the PWDs, elderly, so on. So how come that you, you don't think you need to help them on economic, ease their economic burden? Under the social protection system, there are different ways to help the women. We have CSA. We have the LIFER scheme, which can help these families greatly. Well, for LIFER, the father may be working, the mother may not be working. So the LIFER will help them and support the family. So we have to look at the overall social protection system. The expenditure is great and we have to set priorities. Mr. Michael Tian, first round, four minutes. Thank you, Chairman. The pilot scheme for community care service voucher for the elder. This is to allow for those on the waiting list to choose whether they can go to, with private, prefer private RCHEs or not. And that would help. There are some thirty thousand on the waiting list. And ninety percent of them are waiting for subsidized places. And only ten to twenty percent are interested in going to private RCHEs on board play scheme. It has to do with the quality of the services. For subsidized, fourteen thousand dollars each month is paid out. For board play scheme, A category A is just ninety thousand, nine thousand to ten thousand dollars. So there is a difference here, four thousand to five thousand dollars. So if I'm on the waiting list, I would definitely wait for the one costing fourteen thousand dollars. But then for the voucher scheme, you are just giving out an amount equal to that cost charged by the CAT A, board play scheme, grade A scheme. Eleven thousand dollars. So I'd rather wait. Now, since you are subsidizing these places. Why aren't you asking the, or allowing the private market to provide service of the same quality as you are providing? So why aren't you giving them, say, fourteen thousand dollars? So that these private RCHEs can also provide services of a good, good standard. And when you do that, you can impose an additional condition, asking the relevant private RCHEs to measure up to the standards. Well, maybe we can call these private RCHEs grade AA. And that can, if we do that, that can help divert the elderly to the private market. Why haven't you considered this? For private RCHEs, they still have to pay a rent for subsidized RCHEs. They don't have to pay a rent. So what's your view on this? The pilot scheme on residential care services voucher for the elderly. Well, that is still being studied. We've asked Hong Kong U to conduct a consultant study. Well, that's not been implemented yet, right? We are still listening to views. Our concept is that the money follows the user principle. This is a brand-new concept. So how much are you talking about? If we want to have an effect of diverting the elderly. We would try to try out the approach. And then we will have to wait till the consultant gives us a report. Responding to my, well, going back to my question. When you are doing the board plays a scheme, can you improve on the conditions? Well, for grade A RCHEs, well, they are actually offering very high-quality services. Well, they are still not catching up with the subsidized RCHEs. That's why ninety percent are still waiting. No, that's not my understanding. The private RCHEs believe that they can upgrade their service as long as you pay them fourteen thousand dollars. Please consider that. Mr. Peter Zhang, third round, two minutes. Reply eighty-two. And that has to do with the community care service voucher scheme for the elderly, how it is used. The administration's reply is that last year, two thousand people used the scheme. And in January, up to January, one thousand two hundred and seventy people, eighty percent are using it. And twenty percent are adopting a wait-and-see attitude. And in this group, sixty-six people have gone beyond three months. If the number increases, I mean, those in the wait-and-see category, the number is increasing. And some of them have gone beyond three months. Will those on the waiting list still be able to use the remaining value of the voucher? Director.
There are two stages to this scheme. In the first stage, all the vouchers have been given out. In the first stage, all the vouchers have been given out. Some have withdrawn and others are waiting. And there is a time limit. We hope that they can join as soon as possible. Those without the voucher and yet interested to join, then we are now studying the second phase of the program. And we want to launch it ASAP, so those interested can try to join and participate.
Mr. Peter Chiang. You talk about the second phase. The first phase is yet to end. So if the voucher period, validity expires, then wouldn't it be a waste? Director.
Those who are still waiting to see, then we are liaising with the elderly concerned and the NGOs to help them to make a quick decision.
Mr. Albert Ho, the Law Reform Commission has recommended reforms on the custodian right. And there have been a number of consultation sessions. And in the near future, do you have a legislative timetable? And if yes, then you may have to provide for extra resources. For example, parents who have joined custody of the children, they may need more help from social workers. And maybe you need a census for them to have consultations and meetings. So what is your plan to tie in with such developments?
We do have a good progress. We are talking to the DOJ and the judiciary and also the Law Society. We're liaising with them as well. DOJ's colleagues are now doing the drafting work. And in the Rehabilitation Advisory Committee, we have a working group. And we invite representatives from the Law Society to help us to see how to take forward the matter. Now, as regards the timetable, once the drafting of the legislation has been done, we will present it to the leg call. And before that, we will do consultation. PS, please supplement. We have talked to the Law Society and we are now doing the drafting work. And we hope to complete the drafting within this year. And we will present it as, in the form of a white bill and consult everyone. And at the RAC, we've got a working group to follow up on the work. And if the departments need resources, we would be applying for extra resources in accordance with the established mechanism.
Mr. Michael Tian, second round, three minutes. Just now I asked the secretary, how come that you are not giving out fourteen thousand dollars to the elderly who choose to have their services in the private market? The secretary said that eleven thousand dollars will be able to give them good quality service already. Well, not, the elderly would not agree with that because ninety of, percent of them are still waiting for a place in subsidized RCH. Because they said that four thousand dollars makes a lot of difference. They would rather wait and not go to private RCH. So secretary, how come that you insist on not giving fourteen thousand dollars to elderly who choose service on the private market? I've already answered that, Chairman. This is just such as, just one recommendation by the consultant. They've tried to understand what's happening at the board place scheme. And actually, we've already made an increase. Last year, last year was just nine thousand dollars and now it's over ten thousand dollars. So we'll try out to see our proposed approach can work and provide an extra choice for the elderly. The question here is, you've already got the board places scheme and you've also got subsidized RCHs. And ninety percent of the elderly people are on the waiting list. Why, why do you seek advice from a consultant? Why don't you listen to the views of the elderly on the waiting list? My view is this. A lot of the elderly are aspiring for the subsidized RCHs because they have confidence in those RCHs.
That's not my understanding because of private aged homes, there is a wrong impression, thinking that the quality is not good. In fact, for the grade A institutions or homes, they're actually very good ones. In fact, we have assessed their performance. So how come there are nine, the ratio for those queuing up for the subsidized or subvented homes would be nine to one? Because they do not agree with what you think, Bureau Director. They believe that the subvented homes were in terms, both in terms of physical, physiotherapists and so on. Well, the man, the manning ratio is a lot better than the private ones. Well, that's because of the traditional way of thinking. Because they believe that for the board place homes, they are not, they are less good. So we are trying to change that. So why don't you just do a survey on those in the waiting, in the queue? So can you submit a report then? I'd like to really see what they think about the private homes and also the subsidized homes. In fact, many experts have already told us, they have conducted a survey. And some elders are willing to go to the board place homes. Well, Michael Tian, you will have to go to the panel to follow up. Paul Chair, three minutes. Well, I'd like to look at two one four. Well, in terms of the assessment, the employment support program to see if it's successful. We're looking at the last term. Well, some nine thousand nine hundred and thirty have to be reeducated. And then one thousand eight hundred and seventy managed to leave the CSSA scheme. So is that part of the initial thirty percent, thirty-two percent? And also according to our understanding, for every year, what's the average figure of those who have left the CSSA program? So can you give us an objective figure and what's the difference? And also under the IEAPS, how much was spent initially? Well, I defer to the deputy director. Well, for the one thousand eight hundred and seventy, well, so out of the nine thousand nine hundred and thirty, one thousand eight hundred and seventy left the CSSA. So for the rest, they remain, but then they would attempt to find employment or go back to school, right? Well, they might have become the low-income cases. So initially, they might have, they might be out of a job. And now they might have got a job, but then their wages are still low. So what about the first two years? How much was spent on the scheme? And for those who might not have joined the scheme and still they might have left the CSSA, so what's the comparison? Well, if you look at the IEAPS in 2013, it started in January. And then for the previous scheme, in fact, there were different schemes, including the Integrated Employment Assistance Program. And also there are two other programs. So our figures do not provide a direct comparison because in the past, we were not talking about the same schemes being offered. As to how much was spent during the first two years on the scheme, I don't have a direct figure here. But then, when compared to the two hundred million dollars for two years, that should be comparable. Because the initial spending might have been a bit larger. That's because the number of unemployment cases back then was higher. And during the past two years, the number has dropped. All right, it's time for us to adjourn this session. And the next session will start at four thirty. And my limited version of egg tarts are ready. So so please, for, for the officials, please go to room three. And then for the rest, please go to the common room.